President.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am present ma'am, I'm present. Mr. Valley, give us a word?
I will. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day, for the rain that will bring us the spring crops, for the peace that we have in our community. Help us, help this council to put our best minds together for the good of the city. And remember that this is the season of peace and goodwill towards all people. Thank you. Amen.
I'm the city manager.
Yes sir. Mr. Dora, a little birdie told me that you have a lot more in store for you this evening at the council meeting. So I'm just getting a little ahead of that. This is from me and the staff. And we know that you enjoy fishing and spending time with your boys. And you ask grantees at something special to do something and they go way out. So this is something hopefully you can keep in remembrance of your time of working with us at the city and we have enjoyed it. Thank you. Okay. There's a fly for debate up here and the fish down in the pond.
There's a fish in here y'all. That's what I was saying.
No, I did not, I did not know you were a fisherman. I didn't know you were a fisherman. I had no, I had no idea. I thought it was like some mafia reference or something like that.
It's a horse head.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
Yes sir.
That was very nice.
Yes sir.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Let's, um, let's jump right into it.
Okay.
We, um, we did the invocation. Let's jump right into the food policy committee.
Yes sir. Our first item for city council discussion today is the update from the food policy committee. Ms. Ashley Page, our program coordinator with the USC Arnold School of Public Health Department of Health Promotion, Education and Behavior. And thanks everyone. I know there's probably a team effort with this presentation. I don't know everyone's names, so thank you for being here.
Can you introduce us all? Hi everybody, good afternoon. Many thanks to the city council members for inviting us today to share a quick, a quick briefing of some of this year's work by the Columbia Food Policy Committee. Thank you to our city liaison, Taylor Wright, for his ongoing support to the committee. And also to all the hard work of our committee and subcommittee members over the last couple of years. My name is Christina Spock and I'm joined by Ashley Page and Carrie Draper representing members of the Columbia Food Policy Committee, whose mission is to offer solutions to challenges within our local food system that, ensuring that those solutions are grounded and sustainability and justice. And then to work with the council to make those solutions a reality. For the food system here and the challenges that we see specifically for Columbia include the fact that 20% of our residents are living in poverty and 16% of those households rely on SNAP to feed their families. In terms of our county, Richland County, over 65,000 residents are food insecure, meaning they don't know necessarily where their next meal is going to come from, and 14,000 of them being children. And so a measure of success for us in building healthy and sustainable food systems is also in addressing and dismantling the social inequities that we see built in to our local food system. And these inequities really reinforce who has access and who can afford healthy food. And that we see this directly related to race and to class, as my dear friend, Charlotte Ammons, out of North Carolina reminds us, it's not only about class, but it's, oh, sorry, it's not always about race, but it's, it's always about race. So, for example, when we look at the economic and income gaps of South Carolina based on race, when we look at gender inequality, when we look at who has access to living wage jobs, South Carolina ranks 49th in our country. So we know that wages are connected to healthy food access, because if you're making poverty wages, it's going to be really hard for you to feed your family on a regular basis, right? And we know that over half of our population is living paycheck to paycheck. Ironically, food workers, those folks that get food to our table, that grow and process, distribute and serve our food, they on average make the lowest wage of any other US worker. They experience higher rates of food insecurity. And they're also twice as likely than any other worker to be on food stamps. So healthy food access, we see a symptom, being a symptom of larger systemic inequities, all of which are urgent to address. And we also believe that you'll agree, that they deserve to be top priority for our city's elected officials. So all of this has been the framework, the lens by which we have done our work at the Columbia Food Policy Committee. Our first recommendation to offer is to reserve seats on the Columbia Food Policy Committee explicitly for food insecure residents. And because that wasn't the initial makeup of our committee, we created the Food Equity Subcommittee to make sure that folks that were most impacted by food insecurity and poverty wages in our city, that they were at the forefront of crafting and deciding what food policy recommendations we wanted to offer to the city. We also use our limited grant funds to honor our community residents and their time that they spent with us to help us craft these recommendations. And then also to support local businesses of color and farmers of color. So this process over the last about year and a half is outlined in the report that we shared with y'all. It will also, Carrie is going to walk us through what it looked like. And then Ashley is going to lay out what our community-backed policy recommendations are. Thank you.
Okay, great. So again, my name's Carrie Draper. Thanks so much for having us here today. So I'm going to lay out the food, what we call the food gathering process that we took over a little more than a year timeframe. And this was really the mechanism that we used soon after the Food Equity Subcommittee was formed in order to do what Christina just talked about, and making sure that the policy recommendations that we ultimately were going to bring forth to you all were really driven by the perspectives of people most impacted by food inequities in our city. So up here, this is an image of where we held our food, our five food gathering, five food gathering gatherings. And so we chose these locations based partially on the connections that people had to people living in these neighborhoods within the Food Equity Subcommittee, as well as also recognizing that people in the northern part of our city are most impacted by food inequities. And so I know this image is also in the report, so you can see it a little clearer there. But the green dots represent grocery stores. And so one indicator of the food inequities that people in the neighborhoods that we were talking with experience is the fact that grocery stores are much more limited in the northern part of Columbia than other parts of the city. And so these are some more stats on the neighborhoods that we spoke with. So as you can see, the overwhelming majority of people in these neighborhoods are African American and of a low income, further illustrating what Christina's talking about, the pervasiveness of the racial inequities that we experience in our food system that we are not immune to locally in our city at all. And then 70% of people living in these neighborhoods are living in what are considered low food access areas, based on the USDA definition of what that is. And about a third of people receive SNAP, so the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, what used to be called food stamps. And about a fifth of people living in the neighborhoods we spoke with did not have access to a car. So like I said earlier, we held five community gatherings and we really wanted to make sure that not only in our policy recommendations, but also within our process, we were really living at our values as a Food Equity Subcommittee, which partially meant making sure that there were as least amount of barriers to people being able to participate in this process as possible. So we were able to provide dinner to everybody who came to a gathering and we really wanted to support a local business in providing the food, so we were able to do that. We wanted to make sure that childcare was not an issue, so we were able to provide child-friendly activities. And then at the end of each gathering, everybody received a fresh produce box from the Food Share South Carolina program. And then for most of the food gatherings, we were also able to compensate a neighborhood leader to be the one really leading the outreach efforts to, to get people to come to the gatherings. And so based on the cost of the things you see up here, as well as a very conservative estimate of the value of all the volunteer hours that went into these, making these happen, it was about $15,000 in kind and monetarily to put these on. And we were very fortunate to be able to partner with the Central Midlands Council of Government's nonprofit arm and the Midlands Food Alliance, which is a regional food council, to where they got a grant from the South Carolina Association for Economic Community Development. So that's who provided then the, the money to do these things.
Carrie, how much was the grant?
I think the grant itself was around 10, 10 to 12,000. Yeah. And so at each of the gatherings, the way that they worked is that we certainly gave an introduction, welcomed everybody there, explained our intention on calling people to participate, and then we all shared a meal together. And then we divided people up into small groups to make sure that people felt more comfortable and had the opportunity to share their voice in the process. And then had facilitators provide some key questions. So we asked people, what does food look like right now in your neighborhood? What are the challenges that you experience in accessing the healthy foods that you want to need? And what would you like to see be the solutions to address those challenges? And so then, once we gathered all of that information, we then kind of synthesized all the findings together, identified key themes in terms of both the challenges and the solutions people wanted to see. And then coupled that with looking at what it says in the research literature around, you know, addressing food inequities, what's been successful in other cities, and looked at models in other cities, and developed all of that then into what is also in the report, and that Ashley is going to be the one to talk about, but kind of our guiding aspirations and specific policy recommendations. And so after that process, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we essentially got it right, that we really heard what, what people were saying and interpreted that correctly. So then we invited everybody back together for a culminating town hall where, as you can see, we had about 100 residents participate. And we asked people to go around, look at everything we had put together, give us feedback on what they thought about that. Does this resonate with what you heard and what you said in the food gatherings? And then also asked people to rank within each aspiration, the top two things that they thought were the most pressing, most important for the city to be addressing. And so these were our key themes in terms of the challenges that we heard in our food gatherings. So a lot of people talked about the things around grocery stores. So either that-
Residents are living in poverty and 16% of those households rely on SNAP to feed their families. In terms of our county, Richland County, over 65,000 residents are food insecure, meaning they don't know necessarily where their next meal is going to come from, and 14,000 of them being children. And so a measure of success for us in building healthy and sustainable food systems is also in addressing and dismantling the social inequities that we see built in to our local food system. And these inequities really reinforce who has access and who can afford healthy food. And that we see this directly related to race and to class. As my dear friend, Charlotte Ammons, out of North Carolina, reminds us, it's not only about class, but it's all, sorry, it's not always about race, but it's always about race. So, for example, when we look at the economic and income gaps of South Carolina based on race, when we look at gender inequality, when we look at who has access to living wage jobs, South Carolina ranks 49th in our country. So we know that wages are connected to healthy food access, because if you're making poverty wages, it's going to be really hard for you to feed your family on a regular basis, right? And we know that over half of our population is living paycheck to paycheck. Ironically, food workers, those folks that get food to our table, that grow and process, distribute, and serve our food, they, on average, make the lowest wage of any other US worker. They experience higher rates of food insecurity, and they're also twice as likely than any other worker to be on food stamps. So, healthy food access, we see a symptom, being a symptom of larger systemic inequities, all of which are urgent to address. And we also believe, that you'll agree, that they deserve to be top priority for our city's elected officials. So all of this has been the framework, the lens by which we have done our work at the Columbia Food Policy Committee. Our first recommendation to offer is to reserve seats on the Columbia Food Policy Committee explicitly for food insecure residents. And because that wasn't the initial makeup of our committee, we created the Food Equity Subcommittee to make sure that folks that were most impacted by food insecurity and poverty wages in our city, that they were at the forefront of crafting and deciding what food policy recommendations we wanted to offer to the city. We also use our limited grant funds to honor our community residents and their time that they spent with us to help us craft these recommendations, and then also to support local businesses of color and farmers of color. So, this process over the last about year and a half is outlined in the report that we shared with y'all. It will also, Carrie is going to walk us through what it looked like, and then Ashley is going to lay out what our community-backed policy recommendations are. Thank you.
So again, my name's Carrie Draper. Thanks so much for having us here today. So I'm going to lay out the food, what we called a food gathering process that we took over a little more than a year timeframe. And this was really the mechanism that we used soon after the Food Equity Subcommittee was formed in order to do what Christina just talked about, and making sure that the policy recommendations that we ultimately were going to bring forth to you all were really driven by the perspectives of people most impacted by food inequities in our city. So up here, this is an image of where we held our food, our five food gathering, five food gathering gatherings. And so, we chose these locations based partially on the connections that people had, to people living in these neighborhoods within the Food Equity Subcommittee, as well as also recognizing that people in the northern part of our city are most impacted by food inequities. And so, I know this image is also in the report, so you can see it a little clearer there. But the green dots represent grocery stores. And so one indicator of the food inequities that people in the neighborhoods that we were talking with experience is the fact that grocery stores are much more limited in the northern part of Columbia than other parts of the city. And so these are some more stats on the neighborhoods that we spoke with. So as you can see, the overwhelming majority of people in these neighborhoods are African-American and of a low income, further illustrating what Christina's talking about, the pervasiveness of the racial inequities that we experience in our food system that we are not immune to locally in our city at all. And then 70% of people living in these neighborhoods are living in what are considered low food access areas, based on the USDA definition of what that is. And about a third of people received SNAP, so the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, what used to be called food stamps. And about a fifth of people living in the neighborhoods we spoke with did not have access to a car. So, like I said earlier, we held five community gatherings, and we really wanted to make sure that, not only in our policy recommendations, but also within our process, we were really living at our values as a Food Equity Subcommittee, which partially meant making sure that there were as least amount of barriers to people being able to participate in this process as possible. So we were able to provide dinner to everybody who came to a gathering, and we really wanted to support a local business in providing the food, so we were able to do that. We wanted to make sure that childcare was not an issue, so we were able to provide child-friendly activities. And then at the end of each gathering, everybody received a fresh produce box from the Food Share South Carolina program. And then for most of the food gatherings, we were also able to compensate neighborhood leader to be the one really leading the outreach efforts to get people to come to the gatherings. And so based on the cost of the things you see up here, as well as a very conservative estimate of the value of all the volunteer hours that went into these, making these happen, it was about $15,000 in kind and monetarily to put these on. And we were very fortunate to be able to partner with the Central Midlands Council of Government's nonprofit arm and the Midlands Food Alliance, which is a regional food council, to where they got a grant from the South Carolina Association for Economic Community Development. So that's who provided then the money to do these things. I think the grant itself was around $10,000, $10,000 to $12,000. And so at each of the gatherings, the way that they worked is that we certainly gave an introduction, welcomed everybody there, explained our intention on calling people to participate, and then we all shared a meal together. And then we divided people up into small groups to make sure that people felt more comfortable and had the opportunity to share their voice in the process. And then had facilitators provide some key questions. So we asked people, what does food look like right now in your neighborhood? What are the challenges that you experience in accessing the healthy foods that you want to need? And what would you like to see be the solutions to address those challenges? And so then, once we gathered all of that information, we then kind of synthesized all the findings together, identified key themes in terms of both the challenges and the solutions people wanted to see. And then coupled that with looking at what it says in the research literature around, you know, addressing food inequities, what's been successful in other cities, and looked at models in other cities, and developed all of that then into what is also in the report, and that Ashley is going to be the one to talk about, but kind of our guiding aspirations and specific policy recommendations. And so after that process, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we essentially got it right, that we really heard what people were saying and interpreted that correctly. So then we invited everybody back together for a culminating town hall, where, as you can see, we had about 100 residents participate. And we asked people to go around, look at everything we had put together, give us feedback on what they thought about that. Does this resonate with what you heard and what you said in the food gatherings? And then also asked people to rank within each aspiration the top two things that they thought were the most pressing, most important for the city to be addressing. And so, these were our key themes in terms of the challenges that we heard in our food gatherings. So a lot of people talked about the things around grocery stores. So either that grocery stores were just non-existent in their neighborhood, so therefore they had to figure out a way to get outside of their neighborhood to do their food shopping, like relying on friends or family to drive them there when they could, as well as the grocery stores that did exist in the neighborhoods that we were talking to, talking about how a lot of frustration around when I go into a grocery store closest to my neighborhood, the fresh produce, the meat is of poor quality, it's more expensive than even if I go to the same chain of a grocery store across town in a more affluent area of the city. And then people also talked about things around more local options for growing food and for buying food. So definitely seeing an absence of things like community gardens or farms or farmers markets that accept SNAP within their neighborhoods. And then talking about insufficient transportation options to market. So thinking about the, you know, people, again, having to rely on other people to get them to the store, or trying to take the bus, and that just being a very cumbersome process when you have a lot of bags to carry. And then also thinking about limited or inadequate nutrition education opportunities. So a lack of opportunities to learn about healthy eating and shopping on a budget and cooking.
Just curious, because the education piece has come up several times in these discussions, and I'm just curious how that's being added in.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so Tracy is with Richland.
But the thing to that, Daniel, is, I mean, you can educate the kids, but they're not the ones buying the food.
Yeah, but you remember when we went to Mobile years ago, and it was, remember how the community ended up working with partners and having to incentivize the parents to get more involved? And one of the subsets of that was the nutrition and, you know, and I'm just, that program came to mind is, is they were able to, I hate to use the word, but they incentivized families to get involved on the education piece and help through gift cards and stuff, and, you know, anyway. I was thinking down the road, but it was very interesting, because it worked from education, and one of the subsets was the next step.
That was a partnership.
Yes. Do you remember that? I mean, it was very, very, for me, very insightful.
I was, I was actually watching Shark Tank. I don't know if you guys watch Shark Tank. But there's a Shark Tank, there's a big movement up in the north about grocery stores and farmers who would have extra produce that they can sell, because it's not quality up to standard, that they got with this organization who would donate it or reach out to the low-income families who can give them those vegetables or fruits or whatever they are. There's nothing wrong with them whatsoever. But is that something that you guys looked into or looked at? Or maybe you can find similar organization that does that?
Yeah, so I think what Ashley's part is, I think, we'll then, you know, operationalize how we turn these challenges and the solutions people talked about into specific recommendations. But in terms of the Food Policy Committee as a whole, as Christina said, you know, this is one piece of the work that our larger committee has done over the past year or so. But one thing that another Subcommittee has worked on is how to make sure that we're getting, recovering food that could go into the trash can and getting it to people.
And I understand there's a lot more to talk about. And I want to applaud you for, you and your committee, for bringing this up, because that is like one of the biggest major concerns all over the country now. And so we're glad that you guys are bringing attention to that subject.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. I mean, I know it's 2 o'clock, but jeez, I mean, that was a pitiful welcome.
You know we're going to be here for like next seven hours, right?
That's okay. That's okay.
That was anticipatory, yeah.
That's okay. That's okay.
You limited it to seven?
That is okay. But I want to commend you all, and even those folks who are in the audience, because what I hear is a level of engagement. I'm hearing questions being asked, I'm seeing heads nod, I'm hearing some mm-hmm, and some o's in the audience. So I think every single one of us, whether we're on council, we're just a community member, or we work for the city of Columbia, we all know that this is an issue. And so that's why we are here, to try to do something. And so I remember September of 2018, we stood in front of you all, and it wasn't us that presented, it was John Newman and Amy Weaver that presented. And we spoke about what do we do our first year. And I remember so eloquently, the mayor said, "When y'all come and see me next year, I want you to give me some policy recommendations." And so we've been hard at work doing that food gathering process so we can stand before you all today to do just that. So kind of, as we look, and then again, you have this in your packet, and some of the recommendations I'm going to kind of uplift are also in your packet. But from that food gathering process, we came up with five aspirations. And these aspirations are important to note, that they are aligned based on the priority level of the community. So number one was deemed the most important, based on those community members that attended those food gatherings. Number five is still important, but maybe not as time-sensitive to the community members. The first aspiration, healthy food options are affordable, of high quality, and available locally in food insecure communities and household. I want to also point out, we have good people. I see Keith already in the room. We have some other people that couldn't make it that are already doing very good work. And as you kind of glean through some of these recommendations, you'll see a lot is, what can we do to better support people who are already operating in this space, but also open up additional opportunities to get new folks in to help us as we look at these solutions? So one of the things that you'll see is just looking at, one of the things talks about good food purchasing policies, looking at some kind of staple food ordinance. So we know we have a lot of corner stores in some of our communities, and some of these stores are charging outrageous prices for one banana or one orange. But what can we do to uplift those and get more of those items into those stores? But also helping increase capacity for existing folks that are already operating in these spaces. Number two, and I think one and two kind of go hand in hand. One talks about how can we increase affordable produce into households and communities? But number two talks about the folks who are going to help implement that work. So we're going to do that through hopefully spurring entrepreneurship. And I'm so glad we got Office of Business opportunity here. And I want to let you all know, we've already started having conversations, because we understand that if we want to implement something, that's the go-to from the city's perspective. So I want to also let you all know, we're thinking strategically about what resources that the city has already, and who do we need to be having dialogues with? And so as you see here, healthy food entrepreneurship, community-based efforts that support local food systems, grow and thrive in food insecure neighborhoods and households. One of the ways we can do that, on your website, can we list out resources for folks in this space? Can we list out maybe some business programs? Can we list out grants? And not necessarily, because right now, it's all over the place. But maybe can we centralize it? So folks that are interested in doing food system work can have kind of a one-stop shop where they can look at to find this information. Also, are there ways maybe we can provide tax incentives to folks who are looking at opening a healthy food retail business in these low food access areas? Those are just some of the ways we can look at implementing aspiration number two. Number three, our most impacted residents have the means to thrive. So I think Christina already does such an eloquent job of looking at mentioning our food workers. And so thinking about folks, we're talking about food system, and folks that are making our food, growing our food, are oftentimes the most marginalized community members. So what can we do to make sure they thrive? What can we make sure that non-college-bound youth can thrive? What can we do for members that have served their time, and they've given back to society, and now they're recently released but are looking for a new start? How can we make sure that they can give back? And maybe do it through the food system lens. So what can we do? I know y'all have previously supported Small Sugar, which Sarah Simmons is a member of our Food Policy Committee, and y'all have helped her workforce development program.
Did you see Sarah on the Today Show?
She's famous. She's famous. She's famous. And so how can we support organizations like that, that are looking at doing some kind of workforce development, looking at providing jobs for kind of our most marginalized populations? But also that livable wage conversation. So making sure that we're not just asking folks to start these businesses in these low food access areas, and we just giving them $7.25s in an hour. But making sure that we're looking at livable wages so folks can, with dignity, support and feed their family as well. Number four, publicly owned resources. So city land and buildings are available for local food initiatives. So thinking about what spaces does the city own? What land does the city own that maybe we don't have any plans for? In some of these communities, we know that have some food challenges. Are we able to say, hey, we'll give you a lease, maybe $1, maybe we'll do it free five years, and you can set up a farmer's market? Or we want you to do an urban farm? Those are kind of some of the conversations. And so John, back here, has been doing a good job with that land and zoning Subcommittee, looking at some ways that we can do this. And the last piece, transportation, also. Y'all did a pretty good job in kind of forming the Food Policy Committee and the membership. Again, we want our food insecure populations better represented, but we also have some very good professionals. I mentioned Sarah, mentioned John, who comes with a planning background. But we also have John Ando over the Comet, is one of our newer members. And so having that, we understand that transportation plays a key role to how folks access food, but also employment. So we know that there's that Comet to the Market program that the Comet is running, and they've been serving over 1,000 folks a month in that program, accessing grocery stores in the community. How can we better support our local public transportation to make sure all food places are able to get service? Some of the things we heard were, not necessarily just stop, it's raining outside right now. So imagine you may have to stop across the street from the grocery store, and you're carrying tons of groceries, you got two or three kids with you. Technically, it's there, but it's not as close. So also making it as close as possible, those are some things we heard from our community members. And also making sure that we're not just thinking about food, but also employment. So making sure that folks have access to get, whether it's public transportation, have access to get to their jobs, to be able to make the majesties means for their family. So at this time, this completes our presentation. We were told to be mindful of time, because like you said, y'all are going to be here for all these many hours. But what we do want to say, we know it's the holiday season, we want to have some continued dialogue with you all, because pretty much what you can tell is what we're going to be looking at 2020 is how can we take these recommendations from on the paper and move them into action? So we're going to be working to try to have some individual conversations to see maybe what of these recommendations you think, I really like that? I really kind of want to champion that issue and uplift it? That's really what we want to hear, be able to work with you all to get some of these recommendations passed in the city of Columbia. And at this time, if y'all have any additional questions for us, we'll be glad to entertain them. Yes, sir.
Another group that needs to be tied in with your group is Resilient Richland. They are getting off to a good start, and what you're doing dovetails into their goals too, to help family units get security.
We appoint, we appoint the Food Policy Committee so we can add someone from Resilient Richland. Some of you may be very involved, and they're focused on a number of different issues, but in particular, the incidence of trauma and adverse childhood experiences. Amazing challenges our children are facing all across the community. But they are doing amazing work. I couldn't agree more. Mr. McDonald, Mr. Rickman?
I just was curious, you know, we talked about grocery stores and some of the other things. I saw in another community where they actually had a traveling grocery store. It went, and on Tuesdays, it was in this neighborhood. And, you know, they first started catering to some of the older communities, and then now are, you know, tackling some of the stay-at-home moms with a kid just for that same reason. Is that something y'all looked at or thought about? Because it's a great way to start. And then the second part of that was, I was curious from the grocery store standpoint, you know, some of the grocers, one of the things that we heard from one of the challenges we saw on Hardin Street was that people weren't buying the vegetables, and they weren't buying the fresh meats and the things. And so that created a problem, and then, you know, quality and all that, and how you turn that around, which I'm assuming y'all have kind of looked at all those aspects. But I think it'd be good for people to understand that, you know, some of these places provided it, but the market didn't get it. So how do we change the market? And I think that's part of your education piece that you were talking about. But maybe that's a way we can use something to incentivize people to...
That sounds like an area you want to uplift.
We spent some time talking about that. Mr. Davis?
No, I agree with Daniel. One aspect of that is, you're taking it to the people, take it to them. I participated in two gatherings, the Gable Oaks and the Print Building, over the past year. And that makes sense, because you have a, you have everybody's attention, and you have the opportunity to do some education in terms of nutrition and so forth and so on. The traveling grocery store, we kind of, we were talking about that. And I like the concept, but it's a question of how you, I think, can bear the expenses of modification of vehicle and so forth. But that's a good idea.
Well, that was going to be my comment, was to piggyback on that, that especially the Atlanta area, they have several, actually, the mobile food trucks that are going around. And my understanding is, when they started, maybe three, four years ago, there were a lot of hiccups. They've learned from them, and the newer ones are doing really well in getting into the area. So I was going to say, for 2020, maybe uplifting a particular project, like, you know, let's see if we can try the mobile truck, especially to go into the food desert areas, and look at models like they have in Atlanta, and see if we can replicate that.
Put Wi-Fi on them as well.
I think it'd work, because this one is a, it's a bus.
Well, the chief is ready to address that right now. Chief? This is McDowell?
Yeah, I think last year, we had an extensive conversation about the mobile buses, mobile grocery stores. We identified several places here in South Carolina, particularly one in Charleston. It was the refitting of a bus where folk were able to walk in. That conversation has, we've talked about it. We hadn't done anything with it. We've seen pictures of it. We know the usefulness of a bus or mobile grocery store impacts an area tremendously, especially when there are vegetables to be received and that sort of thing. Our issue, of course, is finding a place, a bus, or some vehicle that would be retrofitted with coolers and the whole nine yards. So that conversation, we've talked about it. We just hadn't done anything with it. But we've talked about it, and I think early this year, we talked about that. So it's on the table, but of course... I'm sorry? I'm sure she will. I was waiting for her to say. So it's a real possibility that that kind of technology, that kind of, because of the food desert situation, it gives us an opportunity to do it.
So we have looked at a model from Charleston. It's the Low Country Grocery Store. If y'all have seen it, it is a bus that's been retrofitted, and it goes to certain destinations, it has a schedule. Staff loves it. We would love to find the right partner to come to the table with us to request possibly CDBG funding for the outfit of the bus to get it started. We don't believe it should be a city-owned or operated business. It should really be a nonprofit that we help with the seed money to get it started. I think it's going to be better received from the communities if it's a grassroots effort rather than just the city putting a bus out there. But we love it. I know the Food Policy Committee has talked about it. We got it to them a little late in their analysis of 2019, but we would love for them to take it and run with it again in the 2020 year.
I had one more thing. I know you made a comment about the city can add the location or something to do with, add it to the website where you can find...
Yeah, centralizing information.
Have you thought about reaching out to the churches and maybe make them the communication tool to advise people where to get fruits and vegetables? Or maybe a moving grocery store? Or maybe even set up like a... Or maybe even set up like a little food court in every different churches around the zip codes or the areas that you identified earlier? I think that would be your, like, number one communication tool to reach out to these people rather than internet, because not everybody would have an internet.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention that there are several members of the Community Food Policy Committee that have also been part of these discussions. We've got Food Share, South Carolina, here in Columbia, that already does food distribution in food insecure communities, and they're looking at expanding. And then also Mr. Keith Alexander, who's with us today from Acxiom Farm, already has a bus, right? And is looking for resources to retrofit and has experience with this kind of work. So I think that there are a number of community partners and organizations that we could identify that could really run with this idea, and it's just a matter of linking them with appropriate supports.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you all so much for your time today.
I didn't get a chance to say something. Y'all spoke twice. Can I?
I always spoke once, but...
Mayor Pro Tem?
I always spoke once.
I'd be talking about your sweater, like I did with Missy. I wasn't a compliment.
It was or was not?
Was not.
I bought it for a sweater party.
Chris Taylor, do not tweet that. I am loving, I am, Steve Benjamin loves Tamika Devine's sweater. It's almost as nice as Missy Gentry's sweater from last week. All right. No, amazing work. Amazing work. I knew, and many of us knew, prior to even establishing the Food Policy Committee, that there's a lot of good work going out there, that we have some legitimate national leaders in the space, getting everyone around the table within perimeter of the city, getting some really good strategic direction. Some of these recommendations take nothing to implement. It takes coordination, it takes us dedicating the time and resources, sometimes it's the land. A lot of our effort is, will have to be focused on existing businesses, as you mentioned, and helping them do a better job serving the community that needs their service. So some of the tools that Melissa already has and deploys all across the city, refashioning them in a way that focuses like a laser beam on access to healthy and quality foods. Some of these are very easy to deliver on, but requires our leadership and sometimes some resources. So I'm excited, and this is what we've been waiting on. Now it's incumbent upon us to continue to work with you all on executing on some of them. And I do believe that every success will breed the next success. I mean, so we just got to start knocking them down one by, knocking them down one by one, being creative, recognizing that some of the challenges, the ability to build brick and mortar, anything now, is such a challenge. I mean, I mean, there's an Amazon box on my doorstep every day. So the, but treating these as mobility challenges and making sure that people have the ability to feed themselves, take care of themselves, feed their temple, feed their families, and do it with dignity. In the most prosperous nation in the history of the world, we can do so much better. And I'm excited that this wonderful committee, committee of professionals has dedicated your time and your talents and your treasures to helping us lead the way. So we will execute. Let's stay on each other. I look forward to doing a deep dive into the report. This is, this is good stuff that y'all. So thank y'all for what you do. Help us continue to get creative and kind of just push the idea, push the narrative. This is a multifaceted challenge that goes deep, as you mentioned, into intersectionality of race and poverty, capitalism, as we know. Just real challenges here, but none that are insurmountable to people who really want it to good. So thank y'all. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Just looking forward to working with y'all.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, are the aspirational goals, anything that you would like endorsed by council this evening, or not necessarily?
That'd be awesome. I think we should. It doesn't mean you have to come back, but we're going to put it on the agenda. If you want to come back, you're more than welcome to come back.
Is that seven hours?
Exactly. Yeah, so is there consensus? No, we're just going to, we're going to endorse the aspirational goals, just make it clear that we support the work of the committee.
They can't do it during the work session.
We can't vote here. We can only vote in general. But don't come back at six, but we'll get it done at six. And, no, thank y'all.
Thank you. Great job.
Tracy, you got something to tell me?
All right, moving, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Devine. Go ahead, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
As we're transitioning...
Move your mic a little closer to you, Ms. Devine. Thank you.
As we're transitioning, I just wanted to introduce my shadow for the day, Ashley Lewis. Ashley works in the Education Department at the University of South Carolina, and she's part of Educational Leaders Program. Is it a year-long program, Ashley? Yeah, so last year, I had Jennifer, I think, yeah, some of you might have remembered. So Ashley shadowed me today, so she got the morning of mental health court, and then the afternoon of council. But I really thought, especially that presentation, that's why I was trying to get you to come in here, because I figured you would enjoy that presentation.
Welcome, Ashley. Good luck keeping up with Ms. Devine. All of her previous shadows have enjoyed it, so I know you will too. We are moving along with the proposed changes to the Mentor Protege Program and CDB update. Ms. Melissa Lindler, Director of the Office of Business Opportunities, and I see Juliet and all her team, so she just never comes alone.
Y'all, I was going to say, y'all dressed alike, I know.
We did not plan this. We walked in the room in the office this morning, and...
Yeah, we're dressed alike.
City blue.
City blue.
Looks nice.
City blue, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Today, this afternoon, we're going to briefly share with you some of the recommendations that we have for some changes that we need to have and revisions in our Mentor Protege Program, as well as our Columbia Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. A number of you have actually called us and had some recommendations, especially in regards to our Mentor Protege Program. We met with Councilman, I hear feedback. Is it okay? Okay. We met with Councilman Bedore, Clint and I, about some questions and concerns that he had heard from some of our MPP participants, and we also had some concerns that we heard from our MPP participants. And we decided, even though we had revisions to MPP last year, we still needed to take these concerns seriously, and we're always in a constant state of trying to improve all of our programs. So we met with our MPP Advisory Council. Columbia Water was present, Clint was there, of course, Missy has helped us with this. Procurement was also a part of this effort, making sure that we're not, we're consistent across the board when it comes to these recommendations and the changes, and everybody's on one accord with what we're trying to do. And that's make sure that the program is doing exactly what it was created to do, create opportunities for our proteges to grow and develop, as well as opportunities to reinvest into our community. I'm going to let Juliet actually go through the actual summaries, but in your packet, you have a summary of, well, you have the changes, the actual changes to the MPP guidelines, the red line version, as well as a summary of the guidelines to the CDVE program that we're recommending. They've both been redlined, and they're in your packet, as well as a copy of the presentation. Thank you. Juliet?
Good afternoon. I promised Ms. Wilson I would be brief, so I'm going to stick to my word, hopefully. And I'm going to jump right into the revisions that Melissa spoke about. So on August 29th, we met with our Advisory Committee, that's our normal biannual meeting, and we had certain discussions, as Melissa had already said, that we had changes earlier this year, but because of those discussions, they prompted extra changes. So those are the revisions we'll go over today. So some of these, all of these revisions have been shared with the participants of the MPP Program, as well as the MPP Advisory Committee, and the Mayor's Business Advisory Council last week or the week before, and also internal to other departments. So for this first slide, we listened to the feedback from all of the meetings that we've had, and we've added clarifying verbiage for parties responsible for completing necessary paperwork and reports. We've removed duplication. This program began in 2014, or the guidelines were written in 2014, so there was some duplication that needed to be removed. We had 15 forms, and now we are down to 10 forms. We did add three more, but we, again, went ahead and removed duplication. And then we also added verbiage to encourage mentors to not only meet our 20% minimum for the proteges, but actually exceed that 20%. We also created a new form, which is called our Implementation Plan Addendum, IPA for short, and for change orders and contract amendments. So here, we have our three types of project structures, which is the traditional, our protege-led and protege-only, and we added clarifying verbiage to all three. So for example, who is responsible for providing bonding and insurance requirements when bidding on projects? Also, who is eligible to bid on certain types of projects? And also, who is responsible for the management and facilitation of a specific type of project? So here, we talk about existing protege-to-mentor status prior to graduation. So as I said, the guidelines were written in 2014, and in eight years, they have, they are able to graduate, which would be 2022. So as we got feedback from the participants, as well as the advisory committee, they suggested that there were a lot of mentors that have already been in business 20, 20 years, 10 years, that could meet the requirements of a mentor, but just could not meet the monetary requirement. So with that being said, we met with multiple people, insurance companies, bonding companies, and did a lot of research to find that they would be able to, in our program, it would behoove us to allow proteges to move up to a mentor status within, I'm sorry, proteges who have been in the program for four years. So that was one of the minimum requirements, is you had to be in our program for at least four years to be able to apply as an existing protege-to-mentor status prior to graduation. So some of the items, again, they would still have to meet the mentor requirements that are currently in place. The difference, again, some of those, for example, for regular mentors, you would need five years of just water and sewer experience. But for these proteges that would be graduating to a mentor status earlier, they actually would have to do three years of water and sewer projects just for Columbia Water, and then on top of that, another five years of projects outside of Columbia Water. We also have, it's not listed here, but we also have paperwork, forms for Columbia Water to actually review these and approve these proteges as mentors based on their performance out in the field. As far as graduation, proteges may be required to graduate after eight years from the program. Again, this came from one of our participants and some other of the Advisory Council, basically telling us that there are some other municipalities around that have programs similar to this, and then when it comes time for them to graduate, they graduate them, and there's nowhere for them to go. So they didn't want to feel like that, or if it, you know, if they were ready for graduation, and maybe they didn't meet the requirements, they were dropped from the program. So we gave them the option that they may be required to graduate in eight years. Per legal, we did the removal of the word arbitration from our mediation language.
Why does it say maybe? I just...
Again, we didn't want them to feel like, you know, they had to, like, they had to graduate in eight years.
I guess this is where I struggle with it, because we seem not to be graduating people. I mean, since this program's been around, I think that almost the majority of the same folks, I mean, the purpose of the program is to get people to be at the other end of it. There has to be a cutoff at a certain point. I mean, either you've learned it, figured it out, or, you know, you're just...
And to speak to that, we do have construction companies that have come to us, that have came to us, and basically, they haven't even had a year. So they need to be at least in the eight-county CSA for a year to apply as a protege. So we had one company that actually came back to us in a year and became a protege. We had other companies that have graduated early that have become mentors. This, again, is just for those firms that have been in business for 10, 20 years that maybe can't meet that financial requirement, but they can meet all the other requirements plus some.
I think, I guess the real graduation would have been in 20...
Within the program, I guess.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I can not get it. I'll give you examples. So I've been in the 8A program for about six years. We graduate out at nine years, I think it is. Do you have a list?
It's nine.
Nine, nine years. But the amount of work that comes annually hasn't really been sufficient to allow financially my company to grow to the point where, you know, if I was somewhere in another part. So after nine years, I would love to be able to say I've made financially, moved to the level that I could, I'm happy to graduate. But really, it takes you a couple of years, really, even to get in and understand and learn the program. And so you really kind of, that beginning part, you might not have the years, and so like around now, at year six, I'm like, okay, this is where I find contracts, this is how I do this, this is how I do that, but I'm about to graduate out. So for this, if you're saying maybe required, if you look at the company and say, okay, they've done whatever, so we're going to graduate them out, but what if the company at seven or eight years is just now getting to the point where they're getting business, where they're growing, where the contracts that they have with the city are, they're able to leverage to get the other contracts, is what we want to do? Why force them out at eight when they're finally able to utilize being in the program to grow their business the way we want it to?
I guess that's my question is, is that it's a program that's supposed to help graduate, and I get the dollars then. So then my question is, the guidelines are how we're helping them get jobs? Is it too strenuous for them to be able to, at a certain point?
I don't, I don't think so. I think...
And I don't know the answer. It just seemed to me that we had the same proteges for so long.
Well, I think you have.
And our goal with this, at the end of the day, and I have to trust y'all, is we want them to be mentors in, you know, construction, water and sewer and everything, especially with this, with all that we had planned was the goal that we had with multiple companies.
Well, I think that's what we...
I guess I'm struggling, because I want to see them at the mentor side, not at the pre...
And that's what we're doing here. I think by having this existing protege-to-mentor status prior to graduation, it provides another opportunity for those proteges that have been a part of the program for at least four years to become mentors. So this is brand new. We haven't done this before in the past. So this gives another way, we've lowered the amount required, you know, the actual dollar amount, so it's only 1.75 million for those proteges that have been in the program. Whereas if you're a mentor coming from outside, maybe from another state, it would have to be 3.5, is that correct, for professional services? And then for construction, it's 2.5 million. Whereas if you're new to the program altogether, you're trying to become a mentor, it's 5 million. So we've lowered those standards, because we know that a lot of our proteges do have that capacity. They're never going to meet that threshold, but they have the capacity. So this gives them another opportunity, gives us another opportunity to help move them into that status. But also, there was one more thing. Even with, go ahead.
I was going to ask, so in that, in that light of that, successful completion of a minimum of five-year water sewer projects, a minimum of five water and sewer projects outside of Columbia, well, if they're struggling with the threshold with inside of the Columbia, does that handicap them on the outside?
Hopefully not, because you got to think now, with the Mentor Protege Program, sometimes our proteges are not getting that work, because our mentors may not be going after those dollars and those contracts. So we can't hold the protege responsible for that, right? But they may be going after other projects within the city as subs under other contracts and building up that capacity. And then we do want them to have some type of experience. If not, Columbia Water's not going to approve them, and that's nothing else that's different. We're not making that decision internally within OBO, because we know that this is something new. And we also know that Columbia Water, their inspectors work very closely with the proteges and the mentors, and they know what they're capable of doing. So they're part of that process too, that decision-making process, to make sure they're ready to be mentors and proteges. So we want them to have that experience. Yes, sir.
Do you have enough records on the proteges to know which ones would meet the requirements, even the minimum requirement?
We do. We do.
So you know who is eligible to be graduating, but are not graduating?
We do. We do.
When I get to Mr. Rickman's concern?
It may answer, because you have some proteges that actually prefer to stay in that state as a protege. So if they do...
But I think that's what he's trying to get to.
Yeah.
You don't want that. You don't want people to use the program and not make room for others.
So we...
But my thing is, on the other flip side, we don't want to push people out if the program hasn't allowed them to grow to the level they need to.
And that's why we put the maybe in there, because it's not up to us, it's our ACM, it's the city manager that makes that decision as well, you know, as to whether or not we let someone go from the program. But if you have someone that's been diligent and... But if you have someone that's been diligent and tried to do the work, they've taken on other subcontracting opportunities within the city, also with other entities, and they still haven't met that threshold, this gives them an opportunity to move forward. But keep in mind, too, there may be other issues that may be preventing them from becoming mentors, and that's their bonding capacity as well. So those, all those things have to be taken in consideration.
Is there a program, or is there a way that we can help them? Because I think that was one of the challenges, somebody said...
Bonding was the problem.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we actually, and she mentioned this, we did speak to some of the, the actual insurance companies that were, you know, responsible for that, and we did hear some of the concerns that they have, and some of the issues that a lot of these protégés may have, or some of their clients have, that may be preventing them from moving forward. And we are going to try to do some more training specifically for that. We had a training that was supposed to be offered this year for bonding, how do you, you know, increase your bonding capacity? That wasn't, the person that was supposed to do it, they weren't able to do it from out of town, but we are going to do that in a year. Yep. And any recommendations that you may have, too, we welcome them.
I'm just thinking that that's something that's holding folks back.
It is.
We are figuring out what we can do to help them in that program, because I just, I want it to be successful. And it just, if you look at it, especially folks who aren't familiar with the process...
Yes, sir.
And they look at it, and they go, what are y'all doing? You know, you're not graduating, you're not helping the, you know, how's that next group? Because people need to see success, because they get involved.
You're right.
You know, we're going to have infrastructure needs for hundreds of years.
Yep. You're right.
We need to keep growing those businesses.
Yes, sir, you're right. And that's one reason that we looked at the administrative burden, to be a part of the process and part of this program. We wanted to reduce that, because we heard a lot of people sitting around the table, especially during the MPP Advisory Council meeting, that it's just too much paperwork, and some of the questions are redundant, and you ask it on one forum, you ask the same question on another forum, or did another forum, and it, it just is not conducive to what you're trying to accomplish, right? So we took about, well, what, three or four months to go through it, work it out amongst ourselves. We also got feedback from our participants, and it's much better. We've reduced 15 forms down to 10. We had to add some additional forms because of these additional things that we're trying to do for our mentors, the Implementation Plan Addendum, making that process easier. So if there's a change order or a contract amendment that's done, they don't have to do a whole new implementation plan. They can just do one sheet instead.
Ms. Wilson, they deserve gold stars if they reduce...
They were honestly by 25%.
It took a minute, though, but I think that the, the forms were added, and it was, oh, we need this form, we need this form, and no one really went back to see exactly what we had in place already. So we did that, and hopefully it'll work. Hopefully, this is, again, a way to strengthen our program and make it better, make it easier to be a part of, and grow not only our mentors, but especially our protégés, and give them some additional opportunities. And we do have one protégé, that's just biting at the bits, for this, for you all to hear this and get your feedback, so we can go ahead and move forward with it.
I think the other key thing that the staff has done is really utilizing the advisory councils, both the mine and the mayors. Those folks are very vocal about, and have great information, because they're experiencing it. They've been mentors and protégés, and so I think that's been really helpful to get us to this point.
You're right. You're right. And we met with the Mayor's Business Advisory Council last week, and they are very excited about this as well. And we shared it with the MPP Advisory Council, heard feedback from them, incorporating those changes. Some of those changes have been incorporated to what you see today. So we're ready. Good. Great.
I'm sorry. I'll wait till you finish.
Okay, and we talked about the removal of the word arbitration from legal, from our mediation section of the MPP guidelines. So our next steps for MPP would be to go back and meet with our MPP Advisory Board, and as well as have a separate meeting with our MPP participants and roll out these changes.
Ms. Wilson, what do we need to do? Is this just an internal change?
Yes, sir. I don't, I don't think we needed any action taken unless you wanted to endorse them, but I mean, really, these are, I consider just internal changes, and we're updating you all on the changes.
I think we just need to, my suggestion, somehow we need to sort of solidify this and whatever other documents that go out, informational documents. And I think it's good that bonding is now not necessarily an obstacle, as well as the time period that you can, you can remain a protégé. But I think the one thing that I've always been following, and we've had a lot of discussions about it, is the mentor-protégé relationship, and who documents when you're ready. That has always been a point of contention that's been brought to my attention. But I think a lot, what I'm hearing you say now is that you've really gone back and you really analyzed and assessed, how are we doing? What were some of the kinks in it? And a pathway to, to where we really want the program to be. And I agree that the more local folks we have that's trained and have their credentials, the more money stays in this community.
Yes, sir. To answer your question, I think one thing that we've done in terms of making sure that we're looking at their business plan, that they do when they initially become a team. That business plan shouldn't change the four years that you're a team. So what we've implemented, instead of having them submit a new business plan annually, which that's what they were doing, we're looking at that initial business plan, and now we have a business plan review. It's a shorter document that you do annually. And that business plan review asks actual questions about your objectives and your goals that you identified in your business plan. So it shows what changes you've made, it gives us an opportunity to see where you've grown, whereas we didn't have that before. So that's another way. We put some measurements in place, some evaluations in place that we didn't really have before, but now we have that. And it's, it's easier, it's very simple to do. It's, it will help us measure it. It would also help them measure their own progress as well.
I don't know, I don't think we really, we really had that. So that's, that's progress in terms of strengthening the program and having expectations, and you can really measure...
Yes, sir.
...what's going on, how long it takes.
One quick thought, and I don't know if it's doable or not. Can you limit how many, how many protégé and mentor can use at the same, like, did we talk about this before?
Sorry. It's been discussed a lot, but no, you're, that's a good question. I think we, I think we had already addressed it.
We have.
Yeah.
Because I, and I know there's a lot of mentor who are comfortable with certain protégé, because they know how they work, and, but if you're going to force companies, more protégés into the program or graduating, I think it might, it's just an idea that you kind of maybe force the mentor to find another protégé and get the other protégé to graduate, and give the cycle going.
And actually, last, the end of last year, October 2018, was our four-year team switch. So for 2014 to 2018, they were comfortable with the mentor-protégé relationship they had, but however, October 2018, everybody had to start switching. So they had to find a new mentor, new protégé, so...
I think you need to, if you can limit the projects, the number of projects for every mentor, every mentor can hire a protégé to do, kind of thing.
I think it's based off the discipline, too. So it is, there are, they have implemented some limitations, but it depends on the discipline.
This is a good example of efficient and effective government, of cutting red tape, as we like to say. Yeah, please.
Okay. I'm going to move on to our Columbia Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. And as Melissa stated earlier, these changes are just to keep our program streamlined. So for example, where we have the eight-county CSA, our combined statistical area, LBE is the same, MPP is the same, CDBE is the same. So to streamline that process, we actually took some of the changes that we made last year from MPP and added those to our CDBE program as well. So we went ahead and added our prompt payment and mediation language from MPP to the CDBE program. And we also went ahead and added our change order language, as well as contract amendments for MPP. So these changes are just documented in the OBO change order and contract amendment form, just like they are in MPP, but now they'll be also documented in CDBE as well. Sure. Sure. So before, we actually used to have, how should I say this? Let's see. So basically, again, where I spoke earlier, where instead of just saying our 20% for the protégé is just to be maintained, that that's the minimum, we also added the word where it could be exceeded. We say where appropriate, because it depends on the type of project or the type of change order. The scope for the change order may be different, and it may not apply to a protégé. But we've also given the protégé the opportunity, or the subcontractor who's onsite working with that mentor or prime, the opportunity to perform that work. So they're not working on their 20% minimum, and then something else comes up and a scope change comes in, and they say, hey, we need somebody to pour more concrete, and they turn around, and there's my buddy Melissa pouring more concrete. And I'm like, wait a minute, I'm the protégé, or I'm the subcontractor, I could have been doing that. So in this case, we're kind of asking the prime, ask, ask your protégé, or ask your subcontractor that's already doing the work first, if they can perform the new scope work. Any questions?
Again, yeah, really, really good work, really good work, and smart, it's data-driven, but it gives us the latitude to adjust. And I really, I will say this, I think the food policy folks may have mentioned Melissa sitting in their meetings, Melissa mentions Clint and others sitting in her meetings, just the synchronicity, and the silo breakdown, and everyone just really communicating, it working together, it's good. It's really good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And that's, and that's everywhere. I mean, I'll walk in a meeting, I'll see one of your staff folks, I'll see him in a meeting, I don't expect to see him in, I mean, there's just, there's some good connectivity, so...
Creates a lot of meeting time, but it then, and it does help ultimately, though, because we're all on the same page, but yes.
And I still yell through the door to Missy, and she's still answering.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, our next presentation is the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee update. Ms. Christina Gallardi, Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Chair, B-PAC. Thank you, Christina.
All right. Good afternoon to the council members and Ms. Wilson. I'm Christina Gallardi, as she mentioned, your current co-chair for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I will share that I will be transitioning my role as chair over to Bart Walrath, who is seated over here, as well as Cynthia Watson. They will be the new faces of the organization starting in 2020. However, I was reappointed by council last month for a second term, and I'm looking forward to continuing. Just for a little bit of context, I don't have a lot of statistics in my presentation, but the walking share for trips in the city of Columbia is 22% in the metro area, which is higher than the national average and very commendable. Our share for biking is a bit smaller at 1%, but overall, around 40 million trips in the city are taken by biking, walking, or transit. And I myself take the bus to work every day, I walk at lunch downtown while I'm here, and then I bike on the weekends. So I try to do a little bit of everything. So thank you for your time on your agenda to provide an update on B-PAC and its activities, and your commitment to safe and supported walking and biking in Columbia. In your packet is a memo where we've articulated in greater detail the three main objectives that I'm going to cover in our short time this afternoon. The first thing that I wanted to cover is our stated mission, which is to improve upon a culture of walking and biking in Columbia through four different aspects: to advise the city of Columbia's staff and council members on bicycle and pedestrian issues, to represent community interests, to provide feedback to staff on projects related to walking and biking, and to develop and implement initiatives to support that. And because B-PAC is a city committee without quite the same defined authoritative roles as perhaps a planning commission or a BOZA, we wanted to take this time to just sort of confirm our mission and our activities with your expectations, because we're often seen as serving in this hybrid role of a nonprofit organization or an advocacy group, yet we're not quite designed that way, because we are a city-appointed committee. And so we want to make sure that we reflect what your desires for this group in terms of being an advisory committee to the city are. So I covered our mission. In 2018, we split up into three different subcommittees within the organization, centered on how we could carry out our mission through different groups coalescing around activities. So policy advisement, community outreach, and projects and initiatives. And in your memo that we provided you, we described some of the activities that we've done within these subcommittees or groups of activities. So for example, policy advisement, spearheaded our review and comments, feedback to the zoning ordinance and land development regulations, providing some feedback, in particular around biking to, biking around schools. We have also provided feedback on the Micro Mobility Committee. We have a B-PAC member who is serving on that as well. And in general, providing letters of support or concern related to project progress within the city, and as relevant to walking and biking. And we'd like to continue this work, looking forward to the future, to continue to have progress towards the Walk-Bike Columbia Plan and continue to measure that. The Community Outreach Committee is focused on establishing relationships with the community, and this has coalesced around developing a community outreach toolkit, which we can share with neighborhood associations when we meet with them. We have also made a concerted effort to improve our relationship with the Comet, as well as the Blue Bike Program, and continue to support and grow their initiatives as they align with biking and walking. And finally, we look forward to continuing to work and partner with neighborhoods to continue to have community conversation, perhaps through walks or bikes, bike rides in those communities. And our final group is projects and initiatives, and that's continuing to work with you and city staff to promote and foster improvements that align with the Walk-Bike Columbia Plan. So some ways that we have done that are hosting our third Open Streets Initiative this year, and continuing to foster the ability of community organizations to host their own open streets. So we're looking at partnering with NOMA next year to host an open streets there, supporting the city with development of Bike Month activities, partnering with other organizations like Cola Town Bike Collective and the Gills Creek Watershed Association for Parking Day, and the Columbia Design League for Play With Your City. And this coming year, we'd like to continue to have more focus on walking initiatives, because as I stated at the beginning, that is an even larger share of the trips that folks take in the city, and we want to make sure that's not neglected, even next to the razzle-dazzle of adding a bike lane. So our question here is just to kind of confirm that our mission and the activity that we're working on aligns with your expectations for our committee, and if you have any comments on things that we should continue to do in the future. And I neglected to mention, the cover for all of this, as part of the memo that we drafted, was the six E's for transportation, which I won't quiz you. If I was drawing from my teaching background, I would do that. But engineering, enforcement, education, encouragement, evaluation, and equity, the six E's that we really form walking, biking initiatives around. And so I think it's important to say that with even our policy advisement or the work of the city, it's important to have complementary activities of not just encouraging people to get out and walk and bike, but actually creating the space and the environment that's safe for them to do that, and promoting that with all people, as well as evaluating our progress towards that. So I'll stop for any comments here, or I can continue forward, and we can discuss at the end.
That does align with the role of B-PAC in our perception of it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Great. The second piece that I wanted to cover today was really reinforcing appointments to help us continue to achieve those goals. And you've already made some progress towards that last month. Our presentation was originally going to be in November and announced in December, and you made four appointments, new appointments to our committee last month, two women, two men, and addressing some of the gaps that we felt we were seeing with our committee. But really, as you continue to evaluate applicants to our committee, we'd like to encourage you to continue to strive for diversity of gender, ethnic, and geographic representation. If possible, to have representation from each of... If possible, to have representation from each of the four districts, as well as perhaps some designated representatives from different stakeholder groups like universities, a disabilities advocacy organization, which you did appoint last month, health organization, which you also covered, but housing and transit, or even school representatives or the mayor's youth council if they would be interested in joining.
Christina.
Yes.
On appointments, I think that it's helpful for at least me and probably others on council, if the committee, if you will help recruit. You know people that are interested in the walk-by, one-year plan and are participants either in walking, I'm sure Bart can't ride a bike, he can do pedestrian part. You know the people that are interested in service. If you could help us with recruitment, that helps.
I haven't seen Howard ride a bike.
I've seen his picture on the.
He had to make it to your car after the meeting.
And, and we have found that we've continued to promote and I did share recommendations of names that I knew, but we also don't want to preclude a good applicant perhaps in a district we haven't been able to cover as well or representing a group we haven't touched yet from having a spot to.
Can we close the loop, Teresa, with Ashley? And as we look at those, those areas, make sure we have some real diversity, all types of diversity, make sure that includes itself in our direction as we're constantly considering more members. All good recommendations.
Of my memo? I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry, I have my version. Okay, good. And then, so that's our primary priority is having representative perspectives on our committee because really to raise up the needs of everyone walking and biking, not just in the downtown core, it's important to have those, that representation. The second recommendation that we were going to offer was considering revising the size for tighter membership. Currently, we stand at 17 members and this year we have fallen to as low as six just with lack of appointments and some folks rolling off. So it's been somewhat difficult sometimes to continue the motivation with such a small group. Difficult to meet quorum as well. So in, in the memo, we had designed or outlined a potential for an 11 to 13 sort of size group. So we wanted to offer that as a consideration, but again, our primary priority is getting the right people in the spots, no matter how many spots there are in particular, but really to encourage active membership out of all of those folks. And so again, because we've visited our mission here and it reflects your expectations, really reinforcing that to applicants and to folks who get appointed to the committee will help us as well.
What would be the ideal kind of committee membership? Two members from each district with a mix of two or three, four people that are at large from the sense of maybe university, maybe, or not necessarily university, but maybe it's going to be college, maybe it's Benedict, whoever. Could y'all maybe give us a suggestion of certain targets? Because I think it helps us then really reach out to that target base to get people more engaged.
So in the memo, we did suggest one option, which was a representative one from each district who we thought could serve as sort of the liaison or the key champion in that area. You know, two certainly as well, but that may be difficult. And then to fill the remaining spots up to an 11 member with sort of a rotating appointment from, as you say, university, health organization, maybe sort of a county or statewide organization, transit, housing, the things that really sort of complement or integrate with transportation issues. Yes.
The only, the only other idea or thought that I just had, you know, is trying to get people and maybe reach out to the council of neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
Maybe they have recommendation, because you, to me, it sounds like you need to be in the middle of the neighborhood discussion kind of thing. So, so they know what you want and what you want to do.
Christina's made a presentation to, when you were doing the bike count, so she's in there. But.
I just don't want to.
But all due respect, most of the time at the neighborhood and council neighborhoods, you have more of an older group of folks who might not be as engaged. So I think the personally touching people is probably the best way.
Well, and with the appointments that we were suggesting, sort of rotating university or housing, again, for that person to be their champion with their, right, with their sector, I suppose. Okay. And the final thing that I wanted to touch on as we close out 2019 and look towards 2020 was we appreciate your support for our efforts and continuation of priorities around biking and walking in 2020. I know following my presentation, there will be some presentations from city staff in support of projects next year in partnership with the county and DOT and within the city as well. And we also want to thank you very much for the allocation of $20,000 towards education and encouragement. This year, we have been already in conversation with city planning staff around how to design a campaign around of that, particularly what key messages around safety and encouraging walking and biking we should consider. And if you have additional suggestions that we should make sure to incorporate, we're happy to. As well as having a multimodal perspective, not just about biking or walking, but really how it all fits together. And so as we continue to diligently work with city staff on making that campaign very successful and, and supporting, again, a safe and well-supported system of walking and biking in the city, to really encourage you to continue to dedicate towards the full six E's by making progress towards those catalyst projects that we can then add positive momentum with this campaign and really generate excitement in the city around it.
Bunch of questions, Mr. Davis and Ms. Devine.
Questions, I got a couple things, so you want, you can go first.
Just responding to one of your, your objectives, walking versus biking. And I'm glad you mentioned DOT and the state. You have a relationship with them. One of the things that I've experienced and I still hear from folks is that there, there are areas, neighborhoods in particular, where folks don't feel safe walking.
Yes, sir.
I think it would help if that committee with the authority that we're giving it would be a partner with us in working with D-HAC, I'm sorry, with DOT to focus more and put more resources in sidewalks. And you know, it's bad when folks just don't feel safe walking in their neighborhoods. And, and that is real.
Yes, sir.
And also with more sidewalks, you see more elderly people taking advantage of your program. They won't ride bikes, but, but, but they will walk. I think that's something that would strengthen our partnership. And I would suggest that y'all.
Yes.
Let us know how that goes.
Sure.
Because I'm meeting with some folks next week about sidewalks.
Okay, great. And if you can help us with making sure we're reaching out to the right community, identifying the right places to be talking to, we would appreciate that. To your mention about elderly individuals, we also have a B-PAC member who is sitting on the Age Friendly Advisory Council for the city. So again, trying to.
I think if you can get that person, for example, to maybe move around in some of the neighborhood meetings.
A couple of things. Start first with thanking you, Christina, for your leadership and, and B-PAC. Y'all do an amazing job and I know that you all don't always feel appreciated by us. And so I, I want to thank you because you, you've stuck there. Even, and even today, your presentation has been very, very good at acknowledging there's challenges, but also making sure that there is, is a discussion about moving forward with the, with the priorities and implementation. Because we've got to, we've got to be able to balance, not just saying it's important, but being able to support the infrastructure necessary to make it safe. So I thank you for sticking with us. I know others have left B-PAC because of their frustration. And we, we appreciate their service as well, but I appreciate you continuing to work with us and still being dedicated to B-PAC. And thank you Bart for volunteering your time. I'm very excited about Bart and Cynthia's leadership as well because I think they will definitely continue what you've started. With that said, a couple, couple.
One more way for Bart to boss us around. That's what we, that's what we needed in life.
Yes.
They're just mere suggestions.
Couple suggestions about kind of working together. I know that the meeting that the mayor and I had with B-PAC, there was a discussion about having some, working more with the county. I have talked with Councilwoman Teresa and she's very interested. So we need to make that a priority for early 2020. How do we put that kind of committee together that can transcend city and county to make sure that we've got resources from both entities going into the master plan? But also, I've had conversations recently with CPAC as well. And I, I think that where our B-PAC and our CPAC priorities align, that there may be some benefit of y'all working together to do some things. So maybe a quarterly meeting or maybe even just an annual meeting of pulling the people together. People on CPAC are very interested in what B-PAC is and vice versa. So I think that, that's a connection I don't think we've made yet, so I'd like to see that. And then the last thing is just, I think as we, we move forward, and I know what you guys mean, you know, education is one thing, but we really have to stick, we have to couple that with implementation. Where we have had challenges with implementation, I think is directly aligned to the lack of education in, in some communities. And so I want to just encourage you to continue to let us know how we can be helpful with that. I mean, you've got council members from every district that when, you know, Sam and Ed and, and others are in their communities, then part, part of the message they could be taking to those community meetings is elevating the B-PAC message as well so that hopefully we can get more people understanding that this is all part of bringing our whole city together and not, and not about, well, I don't ride a bike, so I don't need a bike lane. You know, need to understand how it, it goes together. So if we can, I, I don't feel like y'all use us as much as you can. So please use us to, to help continue to push that message out there in the communities that we're, we frequent.
And the best way to do that is just reach out via email and let you know.
Sounds good. And I know y'all email me, but I mean, call them and say, you know, this is something we're working on and I think that we can be talking about it a little bit more. But thank you.
Thank you very much. So yes, we, we hope you will continue forward with those projects and we'll continue to complement in the education and have you spun up with us in that effort.
In the midst of all the priorities are the implementation of the five E's. That E for education sort of reigns real clearly. There are communities where there is not that impacted kind of emphasis. So of course, we'd like to at least, it would help me tremendously and other folk within the, within the districts, of course, to, to provide the kind of educational pieces to help folk to clearly and concisely understand what B-PAC is.
Okay.
Not only is it a, not only is it one of those E's, but it's, to me, that educational piece reigns real clear and becomes, of course, a priority.
Education, to make sure I, to confirm about what B-PAC is or, okay, okay. And I, I think I'll make sure you have a copy of the Community Outreach Toolkit that we have and if there's more we should add, we can.
I'm sorry, I didn't know he was out. Mr. Recom. Is that everybody? Well, anything else for Christina? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
And please communicate our appreciation to the rest of B-PAC.
Absolutely. Merry Christmas or happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you for volunteering.
Okay, our next two items will be presented by Mr. John Fellows, Planning Administrator, and Mr. Natavis Harris, Pedestrian and Bike Planner. I think Mr. Robert Anderson, Director of Public Works, will assist with the first item as well. And both are in regards to transportation opportunities. The first is the partnership with SC DOT regarding Millwood repaving projects, Phase One and Two, Gervais to Divine. And the second item is the Transportation Alternatives Grant affecting Washington, Marion, and Lincoln Streets. Thank you, John.
It is a great pleasure to be able to speak with you this afternoon. This has been a great partnership, these three projects that we're going to talk about today with Public Works, planning, engineering, and before that, I don't know if you've all met Natavis, but Natavis is standing, sitting right over here. And he put a lot of work into a lot of these drawings and things like that. So I just wanted to call your attention to that.
Has John, has Natavis been to B-PAC yet? I don't remember. When we were saying we're hiring, that was a big.
He has been with us since April, so he has been with B-PAC since, I think, May possibly, so. Sends out all the agendas and is quite engaged with all of them. So a lot of the emails have shifted from me to Natavis, so. So the first slide I wanted to, see if I can get the clicker to work. I wanted to go back a little bit in time to 2017 when we came before you and talked about, the question that was asked was, if we were to put forth some projects in a five-year period with some limited funds, what would we do? And so we came up with this particular map diagram for you. It comes out of the Walk-Bike Columbia Plan and it starts to look at the priorities from Walk-Bike Columbia. It also looks at the infrastructure that the county was going through the Penny Project install, as well as some other projects that the city was looking at, as well as the infrastructure that's already on the ground with regard to biking. And today, we wanted to talk to you about particularly three of these projects. One is Washington Street through the downtown core, as well as Marion Street. You can see Washington's a shorter segment. It's basically providing an east-west connection through the center part of the city. Marion Street is providing a very long north-south connection, which would essentially go from Calhoun all the way down to the USC main campus. And that would create a very good connection between the Bull Street development downtown and then USC. And then with Washington, that provides a connection from Bull Street, for instance, to the Vista. And then I do want to mention that we'll probably be coming back to you in January, February-ish to talk to you about some other things on Calhoun Street. And then the other project is a partnership with DOT. They came to us this summer to talk about a repaving project. And so we'll talk a little bit about Millwood, which the project, project boundaries are Gervais Street down to Divine Street.
Calhoun was, that was Calhoun to Bull and where on the east?
Calhoun was from approximately, I believe that is if it's Gadsden or Wayne all the way to, just to pass Bull Street to Hardin.
Yes, Hardin.
Correct.
And so, John, the, the yellow facilities, which, what are those? Are those Sherro's or this?
I'm going to get into that in the next slide, but you're trying to jump ahead of me. That's okay. So each of these, we've summarized a little bit about each of those facilities. So Washington Street, Marion, and then Millwood. So Washington Street, we'll go through that first to answer Ms. Devine's question. It's going to be a buffered bike lane for the most part. There was a couple blocks where the curb width is a little bit narrow, so it would be a bike lane. But if constructed, that would be the first buffered bike lane we would have. Leaving the parking in place and then the buffer bike lane would be a buffer between vehicular traffic and cyclist. There also, from a safety perspective, it is improving the safety of the travel lanes and that gets to the current lane widths. I also want to note for Washington Street that all parking spaces would remain. There is no change from that, so we have no loss of parking with the current design. The road improvements would be some type of seal coat type product that would allow for longevity of the existing road surface, as well as allowing for a fresh surface for the painting. And then the lane direction, lane reduction would be four feet, four lanes, two, three. And then the lane direction, lane reduction would be four feet, four lanes, two-three. Currently, the lane widths along Washington Street are very narrow, and so you may sometimes actually see people who are in the lane next to park cars actually crossing over the line, lane. So essentially, it's operating, as David Brewer would explain, it's operating actually as a two-lane road. And then when there's a, someone who wants to make a left, they use that, the, the left lane. So essentially, what you would see in the next drawings is, is a turn lane in the middle, allowing all the turning movements at intersections and in a parking garage, and allowing a through lane on Washington. Marion Street would, go ahead.
Can I just ask you, just, I was curious, what, how did y'all pick these three? I, 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 maybe I missed what the material was.
I probably skipped over it a little bit. So when we, back in 2017, when we looked at all the different quarters, one of the other objectives was to look at streets that are city-owned, so that we could implement easy without a lot of having to deal with DOT in jurisdictionally. So Washington, for that segment, is all owned by the city. Marion Street is all owned by the city. And then, as I mentioned, Millwood is a DOT street, but they came to us as a partnership, so that's kind of the, the gist of it.
It wasn't driven by traffic, it was really driven about the ability to do it.
It, it was the ability to do it, as well as the issues that we, that traffic engineering realizes that the way the lane configuration currently is, it's not the optimal, it's not, it's not actually optimal for vehicular traffic. And so it, I think when we finish the project, y'all actually see that both vehicular and bike traffic would actually flow better, from that perspective. Marion Street, real quick, that would be a bike lane. It is a reduction of four lanes to two for vehicular traffic. Parking remains intact. There would be no change of parking on Marion Street. It would improve safety. Right now, some of the lanes are like seven and a half on Marion, so they're very, seven and a half, eight. It's, it's not ideal from that perspective. And then Millwood, as I mentioned, is a partnership with DOT. They've asked us to, to work with them to come up with some designs and public outreach and those types of things. Millwood would be a single-track bike lane on both sides. It would decrease the travel speeds by narrowing some of the lanes. There are some points where the, the lanes are actually rather wide, which when they're wider, they encourage higher speeds. There would be a slight reduction of parking in one particular block to provide a little bit more movement for a bus stop, and that's near House Street. And then the road would be milled and resurfaced. I'll get a little bit more details from that perspective. And there wouldn't really be any lane reductions on Millwood. So why Washington and Marion? It's a city-owned street. It's no loss of parking, the lower volumes of vehicles on both of those streets, and it provides the east-west and the north-south connection to start a system of infrastructure in the downtown area. Washington Street here. Natavis put these great drawings together. You'll see on nearest me is the existing scenario. This is at Main and Washington, so your upper screen would actually be the Sheraton Hotel. And you can see how the buffered bike lanes, which are, they would not be green lanes, but they are just shown for purposes of these drawings to kind of make them pop in green. So you can see how that layout would be modified from that perspective. And then, this is another example, Washington Street at Marion. You have the existing conditions with four lanes and parking, and then you have the two lanes with bike lanes at that particular section. And then we'll switch to Marion, so this would be at the upper part of Marion, at Calhoun. The existing and the proposed on the screen, and you can see that lane reduction and the parking staying intact from that perspective. And then-
John, if you would, back up.
Sure.
Back up for just a minute. A year ago, year and a half ago, we talked about the rogue diet for Calhoun Street.
Correct.
What I hear you saying is that Calhoun remains the same.
So, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, staff will come back to you probably in January, February, to talk about Calhoun Street. We did partner with the Penny. We had public meetings about Calhoun Street, and there is a segment of a number of blocks on Calhoun where the surface of the road is not in great condition. And so, Public Works and some other departments are looking to, so the Penny money cannot, their pot of money is not enough to repave those sections of the road that are kind of at the end of their life. And other parts of the road are in good shape. And so, what the city's trying, been trying to explore is finding a source of funds to repave that section that is at the end of its life, so that when the bike lanes all go together, it's a good, good street for everyone, whether you're pedestrian crossing, you're in your motor vehicle, or you're a bicyclist.
At the Calhoun side, I mean, the Hardin Street side, Calhoun coming up.
It, the project is from Hardin towards Gatsin. I believe the section of street that is not in the greatest shape is closer to downtown. And I don't recall the, the specific blocks, but I think there's four blocks, maybe?
Yeah, it'd be from Assembly to Bull.
Are the blocks that would need to be repaved as they're, at the end of their life. But we, we were hoping to be able to have that information for you today, but we're just a little bit behind on getting some confirmed things for you, so we'll be back in-
For the first of the year, we'll look more specifically at that.
Right. So this time next year, assuming everything's positive, and we get through this presentation, and you, we see Calhoun in a, in a month or so, it's potential that Calhoun would be a fourth, a fourth project in the system. So I think we talked about Marion, oh, Marion and Gervais. So this is, just, so what happens at Marion and Gervais is, south of Gervais Street, Marion actually narrows as it goes towards USC. And so, what will happen is the bike lanes will actually be dropped just before the intersection. They will go into a Cheryl system, so you'll see one, you'll see the bike lane starting and stopping just north of Gervais. And then, as the cyclist goes south of Gervais Street towards the Horseshoe, they would share a lane with Cheryl markings. From that perspective, there's just not enough width. You could remove parking, but it's a very valuable parking area. And because it's a narrower street, and it's going towards USC, we think that, and it's a lower volume speed, speed street and stuff like that, we think the Sherro's will be perfectly fine.
Valuable meaning to citizens, not to the Parking Revenue Service, to citizens.
It's valuable to the citizens, yeah. I mean, it's valuable in that it's used often, so whoever's using it, it's valuable, yes.
I understand.
Yes. Whether, yeah, whether you're in front of your house, or you're a student, or whatever. So we, did I go too far? No. So we have some public outreach strategies that we wanted to, to discuss today. We, of course, would have a public meeting for each of the streets, three streets. We may do them, I think, Washington and Marion, they're from the same TAP funding, and it might be, we might have one meeting, or we could have two. We do, of course, press releases, social media, mailings or postcards for properties along the corridors, personal calls and emails to neighborhood presidents. And if they wanted us to come to meetings with them or their neighborhood, we could, could also do that. We'll do notifications on the NEXAL system, updates on the city website, and then some temporary signage for public meetings. And we could also add lots of other outreach items, too. But that's sort of the, the- The NEXAL system is the one where if you sign up for it, you get like a boil watery advisory, or other types of important notices that come out from the city. So it only goes to those people who are subscribing to the system. Washington and Marion is a TAP grant that we applied for back in 2017. It also has a matching fund that council already has approved, and so I just wanted to refresh your memory on the budget for this. So all the money is actually intact at the moment. So we have Washington, that was 114 Marion, and then we had a traffic study for Lincoln Street included in that grant, which was to look at Lincoln Street from essentially Lady Street down through the Greek Village. That is the lower part of the Vista Greenway that would end up being an on-road surface, but it's an important linkage, because it has the potential of linking the Rocky Branch Greenway to the Vista Greenway. So we wanted to, to see, there's, each block, you have brick streets, you have a divided road. I mean, every two blocks, the, the area changes, and so that was what was included in that grant. And then, we're going to move on to Millwood. So it's a SC DOT-funded project. SC DOT approached the city. There would be a limited loss of parking, as I mentioned, and it is a road encouraged from the Walk Bike Columbia Plan, and it would improve the structure with no loss of, of lanes along Millwood. And then, through these drawings, you can see, these drawings, we made a little bit longer, so what you're going to see is the first slide is existing, the next slide is proposed. So if I need to toggle back and forth, like you're at the eye doctor, just let me know. But if we put it on one slide, it got too small, we were afraid you wouldn't see it from the back of the room. So this is existing condition. You're at Tree Street, sort of at the northern part of Millwood. And then the after is, is, has the bike lanes a little bit narrower, bike lane, narrow travel lanes. One thing I want to point out, the concept, the concept for this repaving process is going to be a two-step process. DOT has immediate funds they can use for resurfacing in 2020, and then they will have, on their list, they have funding to resurface in 2023. And the resurfacing, according to DOT at this time, they would start at Gervais Street, and they're going to go as far south as bids will allow. So it might go almost as close as the orphanage, or it may be somewhat farther back, depending on pricing and what the current bid process is. And then, when the street is actually marked for Phase One, the bike lanes would not have a bike symbol, and they would not have bike signage. There'll just be a line that basically would look like it's a shoulder. And then when Phase Two comes online in two years, that would be resurfaced, and then part of the, the construction documents of Phase Two would become, to come back into Phase One and add those bike symbols and signage. And the reason for that is that essentially, you would create a bike lane for a smaller segment, and the thought was that it would be better to have it officially be a bike lane once the entire corridor is done all at once.
How far beyond Eppworth? Children's Own?
Yes.
How far beyond that?
It's going to be based on how much the bid, so it may be a couple blocks to the north of Eppworth. It could be, what Mr. Magwood had indicated was it probably, the farthest it probably could get to is, is the northern street of, of Eppworth, based on their current bids that they've been sending out there. But if prices go up, it might be a couple blocks, one way or the other. And then, and then the second phase would cover, would start at the ending point and go all the way to Divine.
Okay. Now, does that take in, that take in Drieha?
Yes, it does go all the way in front of Drieha High School, and I'll have, I'll have a picture soon.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
John, so like, on the other side of that back lane, that, that's the piece of parking, and then that's where the Comet will pull over, so it won't pull, it won't block the road.
Yeah, so the-
The bus would come through here, pull in here, and then it would pull out, so the, the bus would not block the travel lane, it would not block the bike lane, it would just basically be in that parking zone.
But that's being created right there.
There currently is a bus stop there, but it's a, it's kind of a, it's a very small, there's not a lot of room to pull out, and so we've-
There's a fat line of匝道 right there.
Yeah.
I'm curious about that. And how the property owners do manage that.
So there has been conversations, Robert has had some conversations with the gentleman at the barber shop, and we know that parking, this area is valuable. There's the two spots where it says Comet there. From the observations that DOT did with their camera work, it doesn't appear that those spaces get used, so it's mostly at this point. It's vacant, vacant properties at the corner. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we haven't reached out to everyone, and I have another slide to tell you who we've reached out to here in a minute. And so the other example we have is Millwood at Daley. In this picture, you can see that there is a, so you have Drieha High School to the north. This is Daley Street where there's a right-only. And then the parking begins on the, on the other side of the street, opposite the high school, where there's a number of businesses, insurance, and law offices.
You'll stop at Daley, though, right?
The bike lane?
Yeah.
Well, I'll show you the proposed. So the proposed, at this point, you would actually, the bike lanes would actually start at Divine Street and go all the way to Gervais, if you're going northbound. On the southbound lane, the bike lanes would actually go in front of, you have an attorney, and then you have an insurance office. But as you get closer to the Dunkin' Donuts, the bike lane would end by, about a block or so, prior to.
The concern you're going to hear, John, is that once you get past Daley, you can't, you can't put a bike lane in front of Drieha High School. I mean, the traffic in and out, and everything else, I mean, is extreme. Right now, it's already, we're lucky we haven't had any incident between that and the intersection, because when DOT redid the intersection, they didn't line them up either. And so, you know, it has been lucky that we haven't had, there's a real concern about anything past Daley Street compressing that because of the traffic congestion. You got, I don't know how many emergency vehicles going through there at every second of the day, if it's not police, fire, and ambulance. So I do think from, from Daley down makes sense, but Daley to the corner, John, is-
Well, we can certainly look at that.
I would be concerned about that.
The traffic engineer has looked at it, both our, the city's traffic engineer and the DOT traffic engineer. And there are some uniquenesses in that particular area, and the reason you can actually fit a bike lane in is because it actually was widened at one point. So you actually have wider lanes in that particular area. I can tell you right-
Worst droppers.
Yeah. At the corner here, at the bottom of the screen, you actually have a law office, and they actually tell their clients not to park in those parking spaces, because as people are driving down Millwood, they actually don't realize that they're hugging the curb, and they actually have to shift at that particular block, and it's an abrupt shift. And so actually, they nick the back of the car, or they take off the mirrors. So they actually tell their clients, "Don't park there."
Off that Divine Street.
Oh, it is very similar to Divine. But in this instance, you can see actually what's happening is the lanes are actually gradually starting to shift a block away to actually do that. So they'd actually, in their instance, having the bike lane and having this new alignment would actually make those spaces much more usable for them, at least from their comments.
And it integrates well with the hawk signal, I think that this would be the slot back near a tree and-
Yes, it works with the hawk signal. It would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't modify anything to the hawk signal.
That's the flicker signal.
And so this is getting closer towards Dunkin' Donuts. This is where you have the existing conditions. And then here, to address Councilman Recom's comment, the bike lane essentially ends, and the cyclist traffic would have to merge and then follow south into the intersection. So outreach to date, staff has initiated some outreach to business owners in the 3200 block and 3300 block of Millwood. Natavis and I have talked to everybody in the, I believe it's the northern block, which I think is 3200. We've left numerous calls to people on 33 and haven't been able to get our calendars to coordinate on that block, but we'll continue to move forward with that. And then also, there were some neighborhood meetings that occurred this summer. They were organized by the neighborhoods. They heard about the repaving project. I had some people from the neighborhoods call and ask questions and things like that, but, so there is interest out there in the community of some of the neighborhoods about that. And then Natavis and I met with Richland One staff last week to talk to them about the plans and show them the plans. They were supportive of it. Their staff asked that we come to a work session with the school, school district board members in January, and then potentially a school board meeting in January just to present the concept. So that's where we kind of are at, at that state from there.
You need to go back and do those meetings with the neighborhoods again. Ashley Page is head of the Old Shandon, and Red used to be Melrose, but somebody else has taken over. Josh, who, Josh, Josh is now head of, but they, they are waiting on us to come back and brief them on this.
Right, and so we-
Door to door, even, there are a lot of older residents that are right off of, I mean, right in that quarter, like literally right off a tree.
And we, we may, we may have some slightly different, I mean, we can certainly do different strategies. I know the neighborhoods met, that was initiative of their own. I know the neighborhoods met, that was initiative of their own, not a formal city-type public meeting. So we would, we would definitely have a public meeting for this project. And we can, we could certainly do, you know, we're proposing sort of the same types of public outreach. Now granted, I want to be clear, this one is really a DOT project. They've come to us, asked us about the painting and all that. So we're going to have to message, in this particular project, it's going to probably be a partnership between DOT and the city in terms of how we message it, how, how the meetings are handled. So we could certainly add in door-to-door. I guess the question becomes, do we go one block off of the corridor? Do we go two blocks off the corridor? We probably need to have some expectations and parameters, because you've got to kind of pause at some point.
And Melrose, Historic Heathwood and Melrose, and those folks, they could probably, they've got an email chain that could probably help you a lot.
Yes. And then I do know for some of the neighborhood meetings, I think, that were pulled together was mostly Melrose and King Street and Old Shannon. But I don't think they included...
Yeah, Old Shannon and King, I mean, I think...
Oh, Court. So there were some people who were included in some of them.
But I think it's much outreach, I mean, obviously, they chime in often. We love to engage citizens, but just make sure that the outreach is happening. And I know, I know it is. Ask them to share the information, because sometimes even the Neighborhood Association may not be always in touch with individual residents might, might want and have. I mean, I don't know. I mean, and obviously, I like snail mail. I mean, it's usually the only way you can make sure something gets on, on someone's front door as well.
Well, you know, sending something by mail, if you send it to the, both the address, as well as the, where the tax bill goes, you can actually accomplish being able to get the property owner and potentially a renter. So often, sometimes, if you just mail it to the tax location, you're only getting, you know, sometimes different people. So we'll definitely try to reach out, those who are property owners, as well as those who live there.
Back in the day, you could just call Walter Cronkite, and everyone would have, Susan Arday, everyone would have it at one time, just not anymore.
That's, that's true. So anyway, that was essentially the summary of it. I don't know if Missy or Robert wants to add anything.
Did you notice that, Susan Arday Fisher, did you notice that? I digress.
That's a long time ago.
It just registered as a trailer.
Timeframe, so I know you said 2023 is the Phase 2, 2020 is the Phase 1?
So my understanding from DOT for Phase 1, they would like to go, they'd like to have the public meetings for Millwood early winter, so probably February-ish. And then they would like to be able to get those plans out there and go to bid. And they'd like to probably, I believe, do the work this summer, was what they would. So they're on a very compressed timeframe from that perspective. They'd like to be able to get it launched and completed within the next 10 months or something, I guess. And then Washington, Marion, we have the TAP grant. So if we're doing outreach and public meetings and things like that, we can actually do both of them, probably, one after the other, or near the same time, and have some efficiencies there. But I think we would probably, since we're reaching two different groups of people, we'd probably have two. Washington and Marion would be one set of meetings, and Millwood would be a different set, so.
Well done.
So, so I guess what we're looking for today, and I just, we wanted to get verification that you're comfortable with Washington and Marion to move forward with the public engagement, and that, from that perspective. And then, from the perspective of Millwood and DOT, is to confirm with them that we want to partner, continue to revise those drawings, make sure that the drawings that are presented to the public meet all traffic standards, coordinate with the school district, and start to plan those public meetings and outreach events. And we can certainly keep Ms. Wilson informed in terms of what outreach we're going to move forward with, so.
And if, as you do outreach, if you wanted to do some old-school grassroots knocking doors and everything else, I think we suggested before, happy to do some of that with you.
Okay.
Particularly with some of our business folks. Yeah, knocking doors, I'm really good at it, actually.
You're getting warmed up.
He hasn't knocked on doors in about 10 years.
It's like that when the people...
Trick or treating, maybe.
It's like that, it's like that, it's like that when the people love you, man, when the people love you. In the event, seriously, if you, I mean, obviously, we always get feedback, as we have had on those corridors. I'm sure some of us would be happy to go knock doors with you, some strategic door knocking, might make some sense.
You're right.
We'll give you a call, make sure that you...
I think all the effort we can, you know, just so we don't get a backlash. Especially as far advanced and meaning hours everybody has.
And I think some of the impact of us doing it, and really coordinating our media strategy with, with local press, and usually, when we do something meaningful, they show up. And having additional cameras there, getting on at 6:00 and 7:00 and 10:00 and 11:00, it increases, increases public awareness, so.
We'll definitely reach out, I mean, we'll, we'll try to, if we can get on a morning show or something like that, we'll try to do that. So, you know, hopefully, they'll, the press will be interested and engaged, too.
You give us good stuff, tweet, tweet-ready as well, we'll, we'll fire it off. To me, could do a TV show on Facebook about it, you know, we can, we can make it happen.
It's going to be Jade, Jade with Divine on Millwood.
On Millwood, on Millwood. No, this is, this is, this is really good stuff. Thank y'all. Christina, thank you all, and be back. And, I mean, we, let's, let's take some leaps forward. Appreciate you.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Have a good afternoon.
All right. Yes, sir.
The executive session, Mr. DeBala, if you could...
Add the amendment.
Well, hold item 8.
Ms. Mayor, I make a motion to go into the executive session for a receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to 30-4-782, sewer expansion fee, revenue options, external funding requests, municipal complex, convention center, meal-share program, Save-A-Lot proposals. And add to that 4624, 4628, and 4830 Divine Street, and municipal boundary adjustment to number 6 and number 7 is discussion of matters related to proposed location or expansion of services to encourage location or expansion of industries or other businesses pursuant to 782, fair road opportunity, and discussion of the employment of an employee pursuant to 30-4-781, city manager and city attorney evaluation.
Is there a second?
Second. We have...
All right, discussion, saying none, we'll move to previous question, or call roll.
Yes.
Aye.
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 You're up.
We don't have any presentations that we need to project for.
We're going upstairs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.